So it's seven o'clock, and I'm going to call this meeting to order. Welcome to the February 5th, 2024 regular meeting of the Board of Education of the Beacon City School District. Please stand for the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, but liberty and justice for all.
Please remain standing.
Boo.
Indivisible. For a moment of silence for Erica Thomaselli, RMS teacher, coach, community member. Vicki, roll call, please.
Here. 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 Here.
Here.
Excused. Here, thank you. Matt, do you mind pointing out the fire exits?
Yep, exits are in the back of the LGI.
Thank you. Open to the public. Is there anyone who would like to make a public comment? Seeing none, we'll move on to our workshop. Tonight, we're going to hear from John G. Metta, our athletics director.
Thank you for having me, everybody. Before we get into the budget portion of the evening, I do want to talk about some highlights that we've had so far in the school year. We'll talk about some statistics, some things we're doing this year, and some things that hopefully that we're doing in years to come. So first off, I present to you our fall and winter scholar athlete teams. For those of you that recall, one of our goals is to be a school of distinction, which has all of our varsity teams, which are eligible to have a grade point average of 90% or above. So far, this is the list that we have for this year, and I am proud to say that in my seven years, this is the highest list that we had of teams that were eligible for this honor. So we'll talk about that a little bit more later, but I did want to recognize these teams for all having a grade point average, 75% of the team roster as 90% or above. Some other notable achievements that we had during the fall. Varsity boys soccer, we're section champions once again, third year in a row. Varsity girls soccer played in the section nine championship game. This was the first time since 1989, and once again, making school history since our jump to section nine. Volleyball won the first league championship in school history. That being said, this is the first time that we've also had volleyball, girls soccer, and boys soccer win the league championship in the same year. I saw many of you at the event. It was a very special fall for us, and we hope to keep things rolling. With the winter, we are in the midst of the season right now, but some notable achievements, both the varsity girls and boys basketball teams were the winners of the Battle of the Tunnel, which everybody knows, that's a big deal with our games versus Haldane. And during our Bulldog Wrestling Tournament, we did have three athletes that were able to make gold, or excuse me, make awards. Second place winner Avery Davis and Jude Bettencourt, and our third place winner was Nixon Salinas. Some health updates from our curriculum. I'd have a lot of information written down here, but basically, I just wanted to focus on RMS, that being our activity portions of our curriculums and all the different initiatives that we've been doing in our health classes, working with students. We're trying to get away from the old textbooks and do some more activity-based activities. And then in BHS, you'll see plenty of examples of bringing in outside resources to provide some important information for our students. I'm not going to read everything, but we're bringing in some very special organizations to try to give our students some more knowledge based on expertise that these organizations have. Some elementary PE updates. On the left, you'll see all the things that we were able to do in each of the elementary schools. Swimming is a very big initiative. We're going to talk about that more, getting our youngsters into the water a little bit more, but we were able to swim with all first and fifth graders. We're going to try to be doing that again this spring. The trip to Metlite Stadium, which you'll see pictured here, a bowling field trip in each of the grades from first to fourth grade. And then parkour, and a special thank you to Hudson Valley Best for volunteering to come into each of the elementary schools to show our students what parkour is. It was a very interesting, very engaging activity that they brought, and they actually did a accumulating seminar here at Beacon High School where they had students show up to get a feel for what that sport actually is. A couple notable things that I've mentioned or that I saw this year, jump rope across America at South Avenue using fitness bands, and they were able to track going from Beacon, New York to Disney World based on the amount of steps that they were having with the jump ropes. And then Glennum, a presentation on hygiene from the high school wellness club that was coordinated with Diane Tanzy, when she was able to come down and speak to fifth graders about general hygiene, not going super into depth, but it was great to have our high school students volunteer to get down around those kids as well. Some secondary PE updates. We're continuing with monthly student of the month at the high school, and we just started at the middle school as well, which you'll see pictured at the bottom. We're trying to do some more field trips such as hiking. We're doing tournaments, flag football tournaments at the middle school. We're continuing with our morning intermurals, which we're going to try to expand next year to the high school, which I'll talk about soon. And we were also able to continue the Elks Club Hoop Shoot at the elementary school, or excuse me, at the middle school, which is getting a great number of students. Hiking for the grades at the high school, as I mentioned, the student of the month in weight room. We're doing a lot of more curriculum in the weight room. Mike Mullins is really diving into curriculum that we're doing, and we're trying to get the students not only during the school day, but after school. And the focus on that is trying to teach them the actual exercises within the school day during classes so that they can go on their own and have somebody watching them, of course, after school at their leisure. Connecting with the youth, we continued our Girls in Sports Day, had over 130 girls from the elementary schools attend this year. It was a wonderful event, it always is. Please feel free to come out. We try to do it every fall. And then, we mentioned last year doing a varsity team mentorship program. This was sending some of our varsity teams down to the elementary schools. This year, we were able to have our cheer team and our varsity boys basketball team visit the elementary schools to help mentor students. We're trying to make it a goal to have each of our varsity teams get down to the elementary schools at least once during your season to provide any type of mentorship that the school sees fit. Our unified bowling and our unified basketball programs, this was just recently started last year, and one great thing about this program, it works with students with disabilities, and it's an actual sport recognized by New York State. And as you can see, the numbers are growing. Last year, we had three, and we're up to nine, so we tripled the numbers, so we're getting great participation from this. Mike Mullins is the coach of the bowling team, does a wonderful job with the kids. And then Mike Mullins and Patrick Shetter will be continuing with the basketball in the spring. I do urge everybody to try to get out to the games, out of all the games that I've watched in my career, these are probably the most meaningful, the most special ones that you can have a chance of seeing. Our athletics award ceremony took place this year. Here's the inductees. I don't need to read them down, but this was another wonderful event. We transitioned from doing it during the halftime of a football game, where during homecoming, to actually having it hosted by a venue. It's very intimate, and this year, we were able to have 115 people come to help celebrate with the achievements that our former athletes had. School spirit, I don't need to read it down, but one notable thing that we are going to be expanding this year, working with the junior class, we're actually going to be having a winter homecoming dance. This is the first that we've been having since I've been here at Beacon, but it's another way to get our students engaged. For those of you who were around during homecoming, what really special events, it really brings the community together. My favorite is probably the Spirit of Beacon Parade, having the kids walk down the streets with their jersey, and you get all the positive feedback from everybody. It's a very, very special week for us. Other things we're doing, once again, I don't need to mention everything, but I was just thinking out loud, we are going to be expanding modified girls and boys crew to seventh and eighth graders this year. The organization is ready to take on more athletes, which is wonderful. We did some surveys this past year with sport participation, especially in lacrosse. And while we're not going to be able to hold a varsity girls lacrosse, we are going to be able to do a JV girls lacrosse, which is great. And then the pep band at the basketball and football games. If anybody's had a chance to see that, it really changes the tone and the atmosphere of our events. Beacon youth swim in the spring, so we're teaming with Beacon Rec to get free sessions for elementary age students into the pool a couple days a week, which is wonderful. And then we're also going to be starting secondary swim intermurals in the spring, and this is based for students in the middle and high school who necessarily don't want to be joining a club and can't commit to that, but will have time to get swim instruction by Michelle Green in the pool after school hours. Other things that we're doing on the right, we're continuing with all of our special award ceremonies and everything that we do. As you can see, we are doing a lot. And as I mentioned previously, the team workout sessions hosted by Mike Mullins. Just so you know the structure of that, we're actually having Mike have sessions where coaches can go online to a Google Doc form and sign up their entire team to do it, and Mike is the one that's hosting the training sessions for the students. We've been doing it since Mike has been here for the past seven years, but it seems to be expanding a little bit more with him at the high school. He's here right after school, and he can offer more time slots and sessions, which is a great segue into our weight room renovations, which are going to be happening in the future. But we're already seeing a higher interest, we're averaging about 40 to 50 students after school each day in the weight room, which is a great number of students to, you know, get a good workout in. Some participation statistics. I think the important thing is looking at the green there. We went up in every girl and boy sport during the fall and the winter this year, so numbers are going up. Total numbers are going up, which is a wonderful thing. We're starting to recover from COVID and having a lapse with that, which is great. And at the bottom, right-hand side, I put a participation average. So based on a rough estimate of the number of students that we have in the school, it's looking like we're getting 30% of the eligible students enrolled in sports and then 23 in the winter. I think because the numbers in the winter sports are down, we just don't offer as many winter sports as we do as the fall or spring sports, but I'd be happy to do a statistic once the spring is down, if anybody's interested in seeing that as well. Some future initiatives that we have, looking at competitive cheer. Our cheer program is excelling. We're getting over 20 athletes each of the seasons, so we are looking into a more competitive base cheer program, which they actually leave for competition and not just cheer at the events. It's a great thing. Girls' flag football, that's a New York State sanctioned sport now. The issue that we have is with the number of students interested in doing that, but I plan on doing some more surveys to see if we can do it. I personally think this would be a great fit for us in Beacon. It's going to get more kids off, you know, doing nothing into doing something, and, you know, with flag football, basically, you got to run, you got to catch, you got to throw. It's not the most intricate of skills that some other sports would require. As I mentioned earlier, the increased swim opportunities as an alternative to clubs, this is something that I'm working with Michelle Green on to really offer some more swim programs and take advantage of our pool hours, more than just a student being on a varsity team and being engaged in a club. So as I mentioned, the Beacon Rec youth swim program is going to be starting with the spring a couple days a week for all the elementary students, and I want Michelle to really expand on the secondary swim intermurals, so we can let anybody walk into the pool after school, get proper instruction, get engaged, and not have to commit and pay the amount of money that a club may have to do.
Do they have to, sorry, Don, do they have to commit to coming regularly, or they can just come when they can and?
No, we haven't gotten to the point of how we're going to do signups, but as long as we know that the students are going to be coming on which day, that's all we're looking for. Also with this, we're trying to increase the amount of time the community has access to the pool, and I think we can structure this nicely so there's not too much downtime. We're starting to get more participation from lifeguards, which is the name of the game. If we don't have the lifeguards, we can't offer the sessions. But overall, with Michelle Green being in the pool area, with her expertise, we're really building it up, and we're really getting it organized nicely.
The Beacon Rec youth thing is that, I know you're probably still working on the details, but that's something like, you sign up through Beacon Rec, it's offered at our thing, and you said it's at no cost or low cost or?
It's at low cost. Low or low cost is what I was told. I believe it's no cost, but I don't want to be miscreant.
And is it like swim instruction or, okay?
Basic swim instruction, acclimation to the pool.
Is that after school?
Yes. Yep. So the goal with, you know, the way that I kind of have it structured in my head with the high school getting out at 2:15, we would start running the secondary intermural program 2:45 to 3:45, and then we could run the Beacon Rec program from 3:45 to 4:45 or something like that.
That's great.
I think those, I think that's great.
Yeah.
And I, I think the community's going to be snapping those spots up in the youth, in the youth program pretty quickly.
Especially with all the kids having more introductions to the pool through, through the field trips. It's great. It all works together well.
Yeah, that's amazing.
I like the partnership with Beacon Rec, too. Like, it's because they have a different way of reaching out to people, and that's awesome.
Yeah, it's a very valuable commodity we have in this pool, and we want to really try to get our students in there as much as possible, considering we have it right at our high school. We're very fortunate.
And you might see down the road, like, more kids being in the, on the teams and stuff, too, like, you know, years down the road.
Yeah, I didn't go into it in too much detail this year, but I mentioned it last year, is just getting our kids even during the school day up as much as possible. We shot for two times last year. I keep trying to push it to three times this year, so I really want to make it a regular part of our phys ed program and have the students up five, six times a year. That's kind of the goal.
I think that other thing, too, is that they can start developing, being on the developing team in eighth grade or seventh and eighth grade?
Yes.
So that idea that they've been exposed through elementary school, and then that's an actual sport, and if there's, I think the other thing about it is the offseason opportunities to, you know, if they, outside of their season, have access to training at the pool and can come after school and do that, that, you know, in that secondary window, that's, that's really great. Is the, the thing Mr. Mullins is doing, the Google Doc is going to be for teams, but is, you're saying it's through the gym, through PE instruction that they develop a workout plan?
So part of our ninth grade curriculum is to talk about weight training, strength and conditioning, so on and so forth. So the goal is teaching them during the school day, when they get the opportunity after school, they already know the exercises that they should be doing. Part of the big district goal, which I have mentioned in the end, is for the students to be able to develop their own fitness plan, and specifically tailored to exactly what they want to do. Not everybody wants to just have muscles. Some people want general fitness, some people want flexibility. Everybody kind of has their own, you know, prerogative, but the point of our curriculum is to teach them what you need to do to achieve what you want, and then they can go ahead and execute when they get an opportunity in the weight room.
John, is weight training only, you'd mentioned ninth grade, do they do it in the other grades, or they do it middle school, too, or I just?
Yep, so they, ninth grade is the real time where they're hammering down the type of weight training activities they should be doing. It's specifically muscular strength and muscular endurance activities, and they really break down the exercises. When you get to 10th to 12th grade, that's when they go in, they talk about what exercises you should be doing, but it's almost like it needs to be a prerequisite in order for them to do it correctly. I am going to mention talking about electives for high school, and I have a meeting with Mr. Dwyer on Wednesday to get that, because I really feel having specific phys ed classes tailored for the high school kids will be extremely important for their development, but we'll talk about that in a little bit. So other things that I mentioned previously, increased sport intermurals at the secondary levels. So an alternative to competitive sports focused on participation, fun, and development. So I'm almost thinking of this as a club sport. So there's varsity sport in a club sport, and different programs have different expectation levels. What we want to try to do next year is to be able to offer sports for secondary age students from the middle school to the high school, an opportunity to get better at these different sports. And quite frankly, some people just can't commit to the amount of time that a varsity season, you know, requires. They have a lot of things going on with academics or in being in other clubs, so on and so forth, but we still want to try to give them an opportunity to get out, have some fun, and hopefully develop on the skills. So what I tried doing is looking at the sports where we essentially have to make cuts from time to time, because the worst thing in the world, in my opinion, is having to turn somebody away who's interested in the sport. Unfortunately, we do have to do so, but if we could provide other ways for these students to continue to get better, let's say if they're in ninth or 10th grade, that's going to at least give them an opportunity to probably, or hopefully, make the team in the future if they have aspirations of doing so. It's also just going to keep us more busy. And what I'm trying to do is to pair coaches in our program to specifically run these intermural sessions. So for example, Patrick Shetter, a varsity boys coach, and Christina Dollar, a varsity girls coach, have already offered to run the basketball intermurals of secondary intermurals at the high school for next year. So I'm going to have my two varsity coaches of the program running these intermural sessions for secondary age kids. You're getting the best from the best. You're getting the top dog when it comes down to instruction. So I'm trying to pair up the intermural sessions with a coach that we have in our program, which hopefully has the most expertise in that sport. Pep band at more events. So I've been speaking to our band director, Samantha Ryan, who's been coming to football games, our boys' basketball games. It's an absolutely wonderful atmosphere, and it's amazing, and I'd like her to do more, and she wants to do more, which is a great thing. So her and I are talking about how we can get her more involved at more of our athletic events. Not only is that provide a great atmosphere, but it also gets more people to attend to our events, and it gets people that necessarily may not go to a basketball game to actually go and find a really enjoyable environment. So her and I are talking about how we can get her involved more. The offseason weight training, we talked about that. Our weight room renovations, which we are currently in progress with, our track renovations, and then a couple additional things that we're going to start looking at is additional seating at the BHS turf, and then tennis court resurfacing, which is in dire need for those of us who have been on the tennis courts. So recommended budget increases. This isn't everything to justify the increases that we're asking for, but it's kind of like a snapshot of the reason that we're asking for the increase. A lot also has to do with inflation. Price of baseball has gone up quite a bit in the last few years, hence us asking for a little bit more, and then keeping up with coaching longevities, more athletic chaperoning, our wanding initiatives that we've been doing, that takes more manpower. However, it's making us a very safe and enjoyable environment for people to watch games. Dues are increases, updating certain equipment like AEDs, and then upgrading equipment in need in our aquatics area, especially to host, you know, good aquatic meets. Track equipment is also coming up on this due date, high jump mats and hurdles, and those have a heavy price tag, but they are in the budget, and that's why I am requesting the increases in these certain categories. As a total, you'll see the budget from 2023, 24, and the added amounts, it's plus $35,000 past last school year. And then finally, I just wanted to recap and go back to the five-year goals. The Board of Education made the recommendation quite, I think, over five years ago to make five-year goals, and I've been sticking to it ever since, and we are making progress. So going back, every student that graduates from BHS will have been offered CPR and first aid. That's currently in progress or in year two of that. So every sophomore and freshman will at least have the opportunity to get CPR and first aid certification, and then it should just trickle on. Every student that graduates from BHS will develop a personal fitness plan. That was mentioned previously, and with having Mike Mullins integrate it with our weight room sessions, this is becoming more and more a reality. Increase in enrollment, which we are continuing to increase, and hopefully we keep going up. elective PE classes at BHS, I'm working with this, with Mr. Dwyer. Just to give you a little background with how I'm seeing this, the goal is to offer three different options for students to choose in grades 10, 11, and 12. Kind of off the top of my head, one would be health and fitness, one would be lifetime activities, and one would be sport and game. So before the students leave for the school year, they would actually coordinate with their guidance capture and choose which option they would want to be in their phys ed class. Now, this takes a lot of coordination. I don't know if it's entirely possible to offer three different electives at one time. It's something we're shooting for. And then the big goal with that would also be offering a section of aquatics, where a student would get CPR, first aid, lifeguard certification, and then go on and work in the workplace as a lifeguard during the summer or whenever they saw fit. But I'm hoping Mr. Dwyer can work his magic with that master schedule, and we can get some of this going. It's going to be a big feat, but I figure what the heck, we got to start somewheres, and let's make it a goal. And then finally, the school distinction award, as we mentioned, and this is the most teams that we've had coming close to this achievement since I've been in this position, which is a really special thing. We focus on academics first before being athletes. I think everybody agrees with that, but so far, we're heading in the right direction to reach this five-year goal. That's it for my presentation, but I'm more than welcome to take any questions that anybody has about anything presented or not presented.
Any questions from the board?
This was really excellent, and it keeps building off of the things that you laid out several years ago, so, and I love the thoughtfulness that you've put into how you're building these different programs and, and especially expanding, the unified team is really, and that that's growing is, is very heartening.
Thank you. Well, when you have good support, you're able to do things, so thank you all. I appreciate it.
Yeah, really, really exciting to be going in this direction, and I love that you have the high school students teaching the hygiene class at the, you know, at the lower level. Like, I like that, I'm seeing that from a lot of the presentations, that we're really getting our students to teach our other students and support our students, and also bringing the music into the sports, all of those things is, is great to see.
Because we know they're really not going to listen to their parents about?
About hygiene.
Yeah.
I just want to give John, and I would also direct this to the high school administration, too, but, you know, it's one of those costs we don't think about as much, but the security costs running these large events that we have. Just the John and the high school administrators and Mark Thomas, they really spend a lot of time pre a large event, just sort of planning it out and mapping it out and making sure it's covered, and we have all the right procedures in place. And while we can't, you know, we may not always guarantee that everything will run perfectly, like, we just, it's really well-staffed and organized in a way that minimizes like disruptions and disruptive events and stuff like that, so it's, you know, I love focusing on all the other parts, but just want to thank you for all the attention you give that, because, you know, at any given game or event, we could have, you know, hundreds and hundreds, if not over 1,000 people at some of these things, and, and we, you know, have everybody come and don't try to limit it, so just want to acknowledge all the hard work that goes into that, because it's a lot.
Absolutely. And also, I mean, the presence that they have is, it's not oppressive at all, you know, it really, I feel like it's such a, there's such a good attitude, and it doesn't feel like security, you know? So it's, it feels safe, but not, not overwhelming.
I just wanted to mention that, you mentioned the pep band. So I, I visit a lot of gymnasiums refereeing. There are no pep bands in any other schools that I've been at in.
Well, our pep band's pretty new.
And our pep band is really good, and they're loud. My son doesn't appreciate it, because they're right behind the bench, but, but they're really good. She's excellent. The drummer is outstanding, and they really do add a little extra to the game. Like, I have friends of mine who really think it's cool. It kind of brings almost like a college atmosphere to it, and it's just a simple thing like that just makes it so much of a different experience to add that to it really, is really awesome, so it's nice to see them there.
The drummer moved here in eighth grade and started drumming in Beacon, so.
Oh, he's awesome. I mean, they're all great, and they don't, and they play, she has them play right up to the last minute. She is on it, I'm telling you, she's, she's well-choreographed. She's awesome.
Well, and she's always recruiting, too. I've seen her grab kids by the collar during the game, like, you're coming, you're joining pep band, you know, so.
I think there's, there's some middle school kids who've jumped in.
Oh, really?
Yeah, some eighth graders have jumped in, too.
Is this only the second year that pep band has? Yeah.
I think so. It's good.
And they really coordinate with the cheerleaders, too, right?
Yeah.
To make sure that the cheerleaders are on, they know when to start, when to stop and stuff. It's, it's really impressive.
It does change the game.
Absolutely.
Yeah, it's really great.
Well, her goal is to also do girls' basketball games next year and to even integrate into some soccer games, which I don't know how that will go, but I want to get them there anyway. We'll try it out.
Yeah.
I'm feeling a mascot and a merch gun are just right. I feel like these are things that are missing from our.
Just so everybody knows, because of your support, it is not uncommon to have a visiting spectator from another school come up and thank us for making sure it's a safe environment, thank us for the staffing that we have to address things promptly when we can. It's getting to the point where it's not uncommon for somebody from another school to come up and say, this is amazing, thank you for greeting us, thank you for the safety. So that should make everybody in here feel good. Because of your support, we're making a great environment for our athletes.
Thanks, thanks for your hard work.
I just have one question.
Yes.
Out of curiosity, what is kayaks in the pool?
So.
Other things we are doing this year.
I forgot to mention the kayak. So through the Beacon Foundation, we were actually able to purchase kayaks this year. We were renting them in the past, so what we do is we do an actual kayak safety program where we send the kids in the pool with all the safety protocols and everything in place, but it gives them another opportunity and something different. We also pair that with the end-of-the-year field trip in the Hudson, and it's organized through an organization that does it regularly, but it's just another way to give them a through an organization that does it regularly, but it's just another way to give them a look at something they could be doing outside school hours.
Great. All right. Thanks.
How do they develop the personal fitness plan? Is that like a meeting, a one-on-one meeting with someone, or is it just kind of happening organically throughout the years?
So it's basically, you teach the five components of health-related fitness. Let's see if I got it. Muscular strength, endurance, flexibility, cardiovascular fitness, and body composition. So you go through all these different facets of the curriculum, you teach them the facts about that, and then you start with body composition. What is your body composition, and what do you want to achieve? Are you going to be a football, the most extreme thing ever, a football player or a cross-country runner? Or not? Do you just want to be healthy? So then, from there, it shows you the types of activities you should be doing for the sport that you want to achieve, or the fitness level that you want to achieve. So basically, it's tailored differently for every student who's going through the curriculum, because everybody's going to want to have different goals, different weight goals, different strength goals, and so on and so forth. But from teaching them that information, they can then tailor that fitness plan. So if we do that in ninth grade, the goal is for them to continue with that fitness plan through 10th through 12th, then they can make necessary adjustments depending on what they want to achieve when they're older.
I mean, I'm going to go back to a couple of board meetings ago when I was talking about the passport, that digital piece. Hearing what we're doing without that, I think that could only enhance as to what they're doing, because then the kids could sign up, they could put it out there, and it would be like for the coach, or the intermural person, or the weight person, like, they could say, "Hey, we need to do this," or, "Oh, we need readers for sergeant at third grade. Could athletes come down and read?" And then they could just start chiming into it and kind of enhance it. So, I mean, I love that it's happening organically in the small community, but like, how can we enhance that? That might be a platform or something to go along to see, does it help with that personal plan that the kids could develop, too?
Right. Or in help with participation, increasing participation. Yeah, yeah. Yeah, I think, I mean, we were going to look into see if, like, Navions had some sort of extra thing we could add, but yeah, I think that would be great.
Cool. Very good.
Thanks so much, John.
Thank you.
Did you have something else there? Okay. Good, thank you. And, okay. Alejandra and Rachel, hello. How are you guys?
Yeah, just in relation to the sports program, of course, I have done 11 sports seasons now. I'm about to go into my 12th, so every season, and I am so grateful for all the opportunities that have been afforded to me through the program, and just like going to one or two meets every week, and just, I know it's a lot, it's a lot to coordinate, so I'm very grateful for my experience in the sports program.
Yeah.
First thing I say. I don't have anything.
Okay. Thank you. And, yeah, Rachel, I mean, August, my son has been on the same team with Rachel from the beginning, I think, and.
Seven grade.
Yeah, it's just been such a great community for him, and yeah, it's so, it's so good to have the kids find something that they can connect to. Reviewing the agenda, there are no notes or corrections. Can I have a motion to, for the board to move to executive session to review the employment history of a particular individual, and the board will return in about half hour?
So moved.
Kristen, second by Eunice. Comments or questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? I'm also in favor, passes seven to zero. Superintendent's report.
I just wanted to alert the board and the community to a couple of things next week. One, I don't think we've been pushing out, I'll send out a superintendent update tomorrow with this, but February 13th at 6:00 p.m. in the High School Theater, the debut was a few months ago, but the rise of project and the foundation for Beacon Schools created the documentary film Lines of Demarcation: Memories From Beacons Black Communities of the 20th Century. So the film is about 45 minutes long. It's going to be February 13th at, here at the High School Theater, at 6 o'clock. So I'm really excited about that. I was not able to see the debut a couple of months ago, so hopefully a bunch of people come out to see it. We had a group of high school students working with some local filmmakers with the Foundation for Beacon School support, and I heard nothing but great things about it, so I can't wait to see it. And then February 16th, the High School PTO is putting this on, as the Harlem Wizards are coming to town. This is, we haven't done it in a few years, COVID kind of interrupted things. It's really just an all-community event, and just a lot of fun, and we really usually fill the gym up, so just a reminder about that. And they will be playing a team of staff, and I'll be on a minutes restriction. My, my training team has me on, has me on a minutes restriction, but I allegedly will play a little bit in that, too. And that's it. And I, you know, I may have kind of showed my cards a little bit during John's presentation, but I really love the work being involved in kind of opening the pool up, or the plans to open the pool up to more kids in the community through, like, the partnership with Beacon Rec. I know there's a lot, kind of a lot of details to work out with that effort, but I'm really excited to see that happen. That's all I have.
Thank you. Board comments? Semra?
No comment.
Kristen?
No comments.
Eunice?
I, thank you. I would like to announce that I, my term will be up at the end of this school year, so June 30th, and I will not be rerunning, so I am putting it out there, since there will be an open seat on the board. Sorry. And just a reminder that the District Wellness Committee meeting is happening this Thursday at 4:00 in the library, and we on the Policy Committee need to reschedule since our last meeting was canceled.
Yes.
And I don't know if we want to go over dates, and if Flora's not here, or if we should just do that by email.
Should we do it over email with Flora?
I think with Flora not here, let's do it over email.
Okay.
But, or text, but we, yeah, we'll figure that out. Hopefully, we'll definitely get something.
I'll send out an email, and I'll just, I don't know if, because we have some dates already for, we're trying to stick with Mondays.
Yeah, so maybe the 12th, next Monday.
Well, I just was assured.
Semra, would that work for you?
Yep, that works for me.
Should we do a pral meeting then, too? That's you, you're the other.
I'm not. I won't.
You won't be here?
Yeah, I have a work thing on 12th.
All right, well, let's start with policy.
All right. I'll just send an email out to see what works for Flora. I imagine that she'd be okay.
Yeah, I'm going to pencil it in.
Okay.
In my effort to be brief, I forgot to mention that we have a facilities meeting on February 20th.
Thank you.
So I was trying to, not have comments, but then I'm like, oh, yeah. Do a something for something.
Facilities on the 23rd, okay.
Yeah. All right. That's it.
Thank you, Eunice. And Eunice, thank you for your service. It's been great to have you. I'm glad we have you for the rest of the year, but.
Oh, thank you.
Thank you for what you've done. Alina?
The only comment I have is on the athletics presentation. I think it was wonderful. I love the idea of the swimmin' in the community, especially for people like me, black and brown people, who don't know how to swim all that well. It's nice to start them early, get them in the community, and like Matt was saying about working with Beacon Rec, and they have their own ways of communicating with the community and getting students, again, kids, young kids, students in. And it's also going to help when they have to take swimming in ninth grade, which a lot of kids dread doing, but if they've been swimming so long, would just be on a sports team or whatever, but swimming from a young age and then getting into ninth grade and know that's part of their curriculum to go swimming, now they're more comfortable than not knowing how to swim. So I think that that, for my community, I think it's a beautiful thing, especially and also intermurals. There's a lot of students who either cannot make a team, don't make a team, or nervous to try out for a team, so have another option for intermurals, I think will also help our students who may not have much going on, or who parents have to drop them off early in the morning, now they have something else to do. And being that I work in higher ed, I think it also introduced them to things that they can do when they get to college, as well as not just, if they don't make a team or play a sport in college, they have intermurals, and a lot of colleges offers intermurals and club sports. So I think that with athletics, the PE, the health, the fitness, that's such important right now, in where we are, so I just think we're hitting a mark on all these things that are going to better our students in the long run. So I'm just proud to be a part of, to be a part of that, and also the wonderful things they're doing with athletics as far as the GPAs, and being on all academic teams. Proud to say that I have students that are part of those teams, and it means something. I think they get excited when they can be a part of, maybe they don't win a tournament, or they don't win something, but to know that they won academic, it's like a little step up, like, but we're smart, you know? So I think that that's pretty cool, that we emphasize it, we talk about it, we encourage it with our students. So just that athletic presentation was just amazing. Yeah.
Thank you. Eric?
I echo what you just said. That was very well said. Just two things. Audit Committee, our next meeting is the 20th at 7:00. We did have a meeting a couple of weeks ago, I don't remember the exact date. We reviewed the audit, and we chose a focus area, which will be around payroll, which will be getting some recommendations back in about two to three months. And I also attended a curriculum meeting back on January 24th. Basically, it was a discussion of the upcoming PLD Day on the 16th, I believe, right? 16th. And also, there was a discussion about the literacy initiative, which I think is a great thing regarding the science of reading. I think that's excellent, that we're going to be looking at teaching that K-12, and SAGI did a good job of relaying that to the coordinators. So it was a good, two good meetings. And that's it for me.
Thank you. Anthony?
Just a comment. My youngest son, fifth grade, came home one day and goes, "There was a basketball player that read to us today," right? And so it shows that community reach network. I always say to my kids, if you want to be a D1 player, you need to be D1 in your sport, in a community, and in the classroom. That's what makes you a D1 player. It's not just what you do on the court. So I think that's a whole student body there, so.
Thank you. I have a few comments. I wanted to just thank you, Matt, and the other administrators that helped the funeral home host the visitation on Friday. I had several community members reach out to me and say how important it was for them to be able to do that here, and then it felt like an extension of the community that Erica Tomaselli had built here in Beacon. And there was a teacher that passed away years ago, right when I became involved as a parent in the district, and I was very disappointed in the way it was dealt with at that time. So I thought this was a really, really beautiful way for her family to be able to honor her, and hopefully gave them a short break from mourning. We're scheduling a policy meeting, I'll work on the pral. Wednesday, I'm going up to Albany for Nisba Lobby Day. I have notes. If there's anything else that anyone wants to add to that, please feel free to check in with me about that. I won't be here for the Harlem Wizards, but I do encourage people to show up, because it is really fun. It's a great event. I'm glad we're doing that again. And, yeah, John, thank you for your presentation, and Eunice, again, thank you for your service. Oh, and so we will have two open seats for this election, and it makes me think that maybe we need to try to organize a Q and A or something so that we could drum up a little bit of interest in the board's seats. We can talk about it in the pral committee, but I kind of wanted to just see if there was consensus around that.
Yeah. I think the more we can get.
Yeah. The more out, the better.
Like at the farmer's market or something.
Yeah, maybe at the table at the farmer's market, or Key Food, you know, everybody goes to Key Food.
Do they, do they talk about it at, I'm sure they probably do, PTA meetings or PTO meetings?
We can, we can email the PTA and just let them know.
You have people there that are somewhat involved and may want to get more involved, you know?
Absolutely. That's how we got to leave. Yeah.
Alina's like, that's how I got tricked.
Matt, did you budget? Yeah, PTO.
Huh?
Did you, last year, did you do, like?
The budget tour?
Yeah. Yeah. So maybe it's something that we can add to that.
Yeah. Yeah, I mean, maybe we can coordinate with board members so that everybody goes to one of those, so they can talk a little bit about their role. But I do think it's important, and, yeah, we're going to have to spread the.
When are signatures due?